Ladies and gentlemen, it is now six o'clock and it's time to begin this meeting. We're going to close these doors because acoustics are a lot better when the doors are closed. So y'all come in, there are some seats in the front. We do have a full house tonight, so I'll ask everyone to be courteous and kindly not try to talk. I will ask if you have your cellphone, to please turn it to silent. If anybody still has an ancient pager, turn it to silence as well. That way we can get through this meeting. Before I call it to order, if those of you who have not been here before will look to my left and your right, you will see that we have a clock. That clock will give 10 minutes to each side on an agenda item. That means those for will have 10 minutes, those against will have 10 minutes. If there are a lot of you signed up to speak, then it might be a good idea to have a spokesman, and that spokesman can also ask everybody to stand if they are for or against an item. And that way we'll be able to see all you're here and why you're here for. With that being said, I will ask Mr. Charles Chandler to give the invocation and to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning. Father God, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for this country, and this state, and this community which we live in. Father, we ask for wisdom for this board as we hear these cases and as we examine them, and that we would do what's best and what's right in your sight, and that you give us wisdom as we hear these cases presented to us. Father, we pray for our community. There are many suffered from the storms, and we pray for them as they recover. We pray for Louisiana and Mississippi and Texas in the face of the storm coming there, because we understand the damage that a storm can do. Father, continue to bless our county and bless us to do your will, and we pray that in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
You'll leave your caps. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One other item I might want to address first is that only those that have signed up are allowed to speak. So I would appreciate the courtesy of those in the audience. If you have something to say, then you needed to have been signed up. And I think when you came in the door, someone asked you, do you have to say, do you need to speak? But anybody who speaks has to address us as a board, and we thank you for that courtesy. Now, the first item on the agenda will be Chance Ricchio, who has a conditional use request for operating...
The approval of the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got to approve the minutes in the last meeting, which was last July. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. We have a second. All those in favor? Unanimously, the minutes are approved as written. Now, we'll go to the first item on the agenda. Chance Ricchio has submitted a request for a conditional use of operating an automotive repair business. The property is located at 24-333 US Highway 80 West. Chance Ricchio will be serving as the agent. This is conditional use. It'll be heard for final determination by the county commissioners in this building, in this room, on October 1st at 5:30. All right, Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case follows a rezoning of this property for the same use. However, just based on the way the ordinance is written, the conditional use had to come back before you all to get approval. Again, that rezoning case was heard at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, and it was approved with the conditions that staff at this board recommended. The general location of this property is between Hope You Like It and Portal on US 80. This is the property, our online map does not have a chance to update yet, but this would be a highway commercial property, as shown, highlighted in blue. The structure that I guess would house the business is already in place, and we'll have pictures of that in just a moment. But it is, again, I think we went through all this with the rezoning case, but there is an operation currently ongoing, and so we get a chance to, you know, see any potential impacts. As it is now, there is a zoning reminder in the staff report. Section 1408 does apply to this use, and so before our business, I guess before we would kind of finalize this process, the business would have to come into compliance with that article of the zoning code. So we do have standards that would address most of the, or a lot of the concerns that we've seen brought up in the rezon case. And so with that, staff recommends approval. And again, we believe that the zoning standards cover most of the issues, so we just recommend just a regular approval.
Mr., is it Ricchio or Ricchio? Is he here?
Sounds good to me. I mean, I don't really know what we're doing, so...
You've been operating this business for some time, correct?
Right. And that's what I'm saying. I mean, everything's fine as far as the conditions are. Or what's not fine, we're fine with correcting.
Are there any questions from this board? If there are none, we will have a motion of recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion to recommend approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bath. All those in favor? All right, we will recommend approval to the county commissioners, October 1st, 5:30, in this room. Thank you, sir. Item number two. William Clayton Mills has submitted a rezon application requesting to rezon five acres from Ag 5 to Mobile Home Park for the purpose of operating a mobile home park. The property is located on Bell Road. John Dotson will be serving as the agent. And again, the county commissioners will hear this as final determination, again, on October 1st. Now, we do have several people signed up to speak, so just beware of your time, and you can watch your clock. And the agent thing will be Mr. John Dotson.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. You may remember this case from, I believe, within the last year. The rezoning was for a manufactured home park. General location is just north of Statesboro. There's on Bell Road, of course, but this is the property shown on the zoning map currently. Majority of the parcels surrounding it are Ag 5 parcels. As you can see, there are some planned subdivisions nearby on Farias Railroad. This scenario of the property, as it's currently used, really currently two structures on the parcel. They recently had a parcel split for some of the back acreage, but this was just, this shows that what would be proposed for the manufactured home park, and incorporating at least one of the structures that's currently there into the park. And this is, again, on our site visit, nearby properties from at least the entrance of what would be at view from the public access, or public road, which Bell Road is a county maintained dirt road. But with that, staff recommends a denial of the request, primarily based on the access and just, I mean, I can go further into that if you want, but anyways, staff arrived at a recommendation of denial.
Mr. Dotson?
Good evening. My name is John Dotson, representing Clay Mills tonight. As Mr. Pope alluded, we were before y'all last year with this. Clay wanted to come back. His plan is to, over time, add probably nine mobile home sites. There is an existing mobile home on there that Clay lives in currently. You know, his plan would be to leave that, build a house on some of the other property that he has with this. If you'll notice, if you'll notice on the sketch, this property would tee off where Bell Road makes that hard left. You'll see it. If you go straight on in, we would have a paved road that comes out to the dirt road, meeting all the county standards, the mobile home standards, Health Department standards, and everything that we would have to do. That being said, we would like a favorable vote, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call you back up if there are questions. First person signed up to speak would be Ms. Mildred Hopkins.
I'm not Millie Hopkins.
No, you're not.
She's one of my clients. I'm Andrew Lavoy. I represent a group of property owners, and with y'all's indulgence, I'd like to speak briefly in Ms. Hopkins' place, and then I'm sure these homeowners will have some things to say as well. Do you mind? Yep, if I can grab that. You know we got to bring a PowerPoint.
I'm going to fly through fairly quickly.
All right. So we do oppose this item, and you're going to hear from three of our property owners who are my clients, Mr. Jerry Morris, Mike Deal, and Millie Hopkins. As Mr., if you want to go to the next one. As was noted, this was an application that was recommended by this board for denial back in May of last year. The vote on that was unanimously approved to deny. And then the county commission also denied the same request four to two when it came to them last year as well. I don't know of any substantive changes between the application from last year and this year, now that they've reapplied for the same location. And as has also been noted, staff now recommends denial of this rezon request. Couple items I wanted to talk about that are important to staff and important to my clients are access. Staff has noted how Bell Road, or that the capacity and general condition of the roads accessing this development would be inadequate. Bell Road is unpaved, and I think we're going to see some photos and hear some comments from my folks about the condition, the history of drainage and maintenance issues out there, and how the increased traffic on Bell Road would make it impossible for folks to get through and to this mobile home park and back to my folks' properties. And then I didn't mention, but there was a law enforcement. It's going to take time for law enforcement to ever get out there as well, which is something staff focused on. This is a map. The red Xs here show mobile home parks in the area. The one near the middle with that blue line sort of running to it would be this location, and the blue line is Bell Road. You can see how far back that is from any paved roads, as opposed to the other Xs that are shown, other mobile home parks, which are all directly off of paved roads. It makes clear just how far off the beaten path this park would be, and just how much it would tax an already overtaxed dirt road. One other comment I wanted to make, staff report talked about suburban neighborhood in that area. If we could go to the next one. This isn't suburban neighborhood. This is from the comprehensive plan. Suburban neighborhood, you can see there in the bottom left, has a number of zoning classifications, which aren't a manufactured home park. That's on the right. That's urban neighborhood. And certainly, even if this area was appropriate for a suburban neighborhood type usage, my clients don't feel that it's appropriate for an urban neighborhood usage, which is what a manufactured home park is, and which staff appears to say this isn't appropriate for an urban neighborhood development either. I'm going to sit down and let these folks who are really directly affected by this and more eloquent than me tell y'all why we'd ask that this be recommended for denial. But real quick, if I could get everybody who is opposing this request to stand, if you aren't already. As y'all can see, there are far more folks than we could fit into 10 minutes, but I appreciate all these folks coming out. As I would guess, these are folks who are living nearby to this property and would see a real problem with this being located there as well. If we can, thank y'all so much. If we can cut through to the last slide, I'm going to leave it with the, these are just some photographs of Bell Road as it currently exists, not to mention if there was a mobile home park out there. And then I'm going to pass the mic over to Ms. Hopkins. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hopkins?
Hi, I'm Millie Hopkins. My husband is Charlie. Thank you for your 100% support we had last year from you guys. We appreciate it. Here we are again, and nothing's really changed. Our community is a rare treasure for Bullock County. It's been geared intentionally for exceptional green spaces with residential development of stick homes, along with heritage farms and ranches, a kind of property, value of property, and location that retired people and matured families, you know, want to buy in that area. The values of the properties in that area ranged between $250,000 and $1.8 million, with the average being $350,000 to $600,000 per residential property. We looked long and hard to find this property composite, and that's why we chose to live there, as did our neighbors. And for most of us, this is our retirement investment. Bell Road is a mile-long nefarious dirt road, as you can see by the pictures. It travels the center of this community, and it has largely parcels of 10, 20, 50, 100 acres with different homes and families, properties in there in that area. We live toward the end of the Bell Road, and our property adjoins Mr. Mills' property, and we pass this property on the way to ours. We're developing our 50 acres, excuse me, with a lodge-like home, timber-framed barn. We have hay pastures, branches, lakes, you know, that kind of thing back in there. And we're just trying to build in kind with what's around us, like the ranch and farms that are there, and the little, cool little homes and the green spaces, you know, kind of tucked back in that pretty area back there. The Bell Road is notorious, is a notorious dirt road that's a mile long. When I called Commissioner Thompson, he told me, honey, you bought the worst property on the worst road, and I can even promise you we'll maintain it. And since we've had Brad Deal and Dink Butler out, and they've agreed that the road never really has been engineered for the people that are there, and the few people that travel it now. We, as neighbors, we're the ones that keep it up. Everybody keeps it up. There's like five of us in the neighborhood that keeps it up. And emergency services have refused to come down the road. The standards of governing a rezoning request, it's clear the mobile home doesn't fit in our community in any manner. It's inconsistent with current nearby zoning uses and property can be used as it's rated now as an Ag 5, and it would overburden nearby roads and utilities. We're not a community of high-density housing, multifamily housing, commercial or industrial development. Nothing in that area reflects a setting for a mobile home park, just anything like what we have in the county now. So in, like you did in '23, we'd ask for your support, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Gerald Morris?
Good evening. I'm Jerry Morris, and I live on Silver Leaf Court next to Bell Road in Sweetbry subdivision. My house is located at the end of a cul-de-sac and a little bit of woods, and then Bell Road, so I'm right there next to Bell Road. I'm retired, 20-year Army veteran. I served in Vietnam. I served 25 years as a Heinzville Police Officer in Heinzville, Georgia, and I was a magistrate judge for eight years. I purchased my retirement home here in Statesboro a year ago because the home was on a quiet cul-de-sac, free from traffic, and peaceful environment, and minimal traffic on Bell Road adjacent to my home. I'm very concerned about the possibility of increased traffic, dust, noise, trash, and four-wheelers that may develop or come from the development of the mobile home park that that will bring. In addition, with my law enforcement experience and background, I've seen firsthand that mobile home parks create an increased number of people and families, all located in a small area with variable incomes, and have a tendency to foster an increase in incidents requiring law enforcement intervention. Any hard-working person who put his life savings into the retirement home of his dreams obviously would be concerned with a mobile home park next door, driving down property values, and this kind of development is inconsistent with the existing property uses in the area. I sincerely request that this commission recommend denial of the application that Mr. Mills has submitted for rezoning. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mike Deal?
My name is Michael Deal. My wife, Sally Ann, and I have established and built our home on Bell Road, as did my brother Brian. We, along with Jody Deal, will inherit the farm from our dad who couldn't be here today. This farmland and our home place has been handed down for generations. My grandfather, George Deal, built a farmhouse, and my dad, George Wentworth Deal, was born on this property 85 years ago. Our family, our children and grandchildren have a stake in our house, our heritage farm. This is our legacy that we want to provide, protect for our future. In addition, over the years, land was sold, and the Deal family cemetery ended up on this property slated for rezoning. As a commercial local builder, I understand the growth that Bullock County is experiencing. I also understand that the infrastructure of Bell Road is inferior. It basically turns into a one-lane road if you have it to pass a vehicle, someone has tobacco up in a field or driveway. Most manufactured home parks that I have seen are on paved roads. Our Bell Road agricultural community is comprised of single-family, stick-built homes, manufactured homes, with lots being five acres or more. This rezoning would cause a strain on the conditions and keep upkeep of the road. I built my forever home on family farmland to be protected from the increasing population that do not have a stake in the land. It is with this statement that we oppose the zoning change.
Thank you, Mr. Deal. All right, there about 48 seconds left. Mr. Mooley, David Mooley? All right, Mr. Justin Kittle?
Hi, my name is Justin Kittle. My wife, Elaine, and I just bought property opposite Mr. Mills. We're in Buckhead Plantation, Lot 10 and 11, so we're on the opposite corner from them. Standing today to oppose, same conditions as well. I took a drive-through, saw the road, also saw the newspaper, seeing school buses are, you know, just starting to get back to go down dirt roads and all that, and that's obviously a concern. But we're new Statesboro residents. We've been here about two months, so this is new for me to be here, and I'm familiar with all you guys, but I will stop just in case there's anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kittle. Mr. McCreary, you have 11 seconds.
Actually, I might have signed up on the wrong paper.
Okay, that's great. We at least called and acknowledged you. That's great. All right, we'll stop the clock. And I have a question too for Mr. Deal before we get started. This road is horrendous. Is this not a county, this is a private road, or is it a county road?
It's a county road.
And the reason it's in this shape is?
There could be a lot of...
Twenty inches of rain helped a lot, didn't it?
Right. There is, I know that they also, the road also accepts drainage coming off of subdivision. I forgot the name of the subdivision. There's a lot of pre-existing conditions there that would take a lot of work to correct, but it's just an old road that, I guess, a lot of old conditions.
Are there any plans for improvement at any time at all?
We, yeah, I know Dink Butler and myself met with Ms. Hopkins a few times out there over some issues, and I think, I believe Public Works, you know, had plans for replacing some drainage pipe in places. And I think they've gone out there and done a few things at times to try to help with the drainage. But what happens on a dirt road, you know, all the sand gets in all the coverts, and as soon as you get it cleaned out, it gets stocked up again a few months later, and we're back to square one. This is kind of a continuous maintenance issue. And some of the issues would require getting roadway, widening the road, and we don't typically get into that unless there's a big push or making those changes, because a lot of times the property owners don't want to make big changes to the area. But that's some of what I guess it would take to make changes to it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from this board? Mr. Bath?
Can we get this thing scraped this week? It looks terrible. It's a legitimate question.
How old are these pictures, Mr. Lavoy?
They're not, they're through this year. They're off and on through this year. They're not like for today, and they were not taken after the storm. This was like after, it changes a lot with a little bit of, you know, a little bit of rain. That's just kind of the average.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Bath?
And Mr. Deal, you said there's a cemetery on this?
Yes.
Property getting rezoned?
There's also a Civil War soldier buried there.
And there's no plans to move that, I assume, if it was changed into a mobile home park?
Mr. Dotson, would you or Mr. Lavoy like to come up? You've got some time left.
To address one of the questions that Mr. Bath, the Deal Cemetery that Mike referred to would not be part of the rezon. It's on the remaining property that Mr. Mills owns. Other than that, if you have any questions...
Can you show me on one of the pronouns where the cemetery is at?
So this property with the cemetery exists, and the Civil War soldiers buried, is actually part of Mr. Mills' land?
Mills' property, yes.
And...
Now, the cemetery was set aside before Clay bought the property, if I remember correctly.
All right, so it has no, it's not in the Deal family anymore? Okay. Any other questions? All right, if there are no other questions, we'll entertain a motion of recommendation.
I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Chandler. All those in favor of a recommendation of denial will be sent before the county commissioners again on October 1st at 5:30. Thank you. If there is anyone who would like to leave, you may go real quickly before we start. If we can ask you to hurry on that, it would greatly appreciate it. Agenda item number three. Southbound Timberlands LLC has submitted an application to rezon approximately 350 acres from Ag 5 to Light Industrial for the development of warehouses. The property is located on US Highway 80 in Bryan County. Stravinsky Capital Management LLC will be acting as the agent. I guess, is that updated? I think Mr. Russian actually is going to be agent.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This also is a case that you all, this board has seen. After it left this board, it, I don't think it ever made it to Board of Commissioners. It was withdrawn for, I think, maybe some of the issues that were brought up at the public hearing at this board. And so I believe the applicant has, you know, maybe done a little more due diligence on some of those issues, and that's why it's back tonight. But the project location is at the southeast corner of Bullock County. But the project location is at the southeast corner of Bullock County. Access would be through U.S. Highway 80 and, I think, a local road, Warnell Farms Road in Bryan County, so actually no access in Bullock County. This is the Bullock County zoning map. Currently, as you see, is Ag 5, and all parcels surrounding the property are Ag 5 as well. There is a, I believe Flemington Woods is a planned subdivision from, I believe, pre- zoning date, so pre-'94, when that was developed. I say that, it may just be a larger lot in Ag 5, but that was before my time at least. But this is the Bryan County zoning map. That was one of the, I think, questions from this board at that time was, they had a concurrent application in with Bryan County that was looking for, I guess, what was their general industrial district, and that has since been resolved by the Bryan County Board of Commissioners, in which they rezoned that property to allow for warehouses. And I do have confirmation from Bryan County in regards to that. So that is their zoning map currently. It's a general industrial district. And this is the aerial of the portion of the property in Bullock County. And currently, the use is in agriculture timber. This is the site plan that was presented by the applicant, and which shows three warehouses could fit on that site of that approximate size, based on the wetlands as shown, you know, with the green and then some stormwater detention in the blue. Again, this would be a part of a larger warehouse development, which goes into mostly in Bryan County. And that, this just kind of shows the access onto Warnell Farms Road. The traffic study, I think there was a question last time about the traffic flows and the traffic study that was being performed at that time. It had not been, I guess, approved or accepted by the Bryan County engineer at that time, but all that was worked through, and really just no access through Bullock County streets, but is what that told us. But again, this is Highway 80 where we placed the sign. The parcel's really not accessible to us from, so that we just kind of picked the entry location where it would go, so. And with that, staff recommends approval of the rezone request with, we do have four special conditions for consideration, and those are amended staff recommendations from the last time you saw it, so. With that, unless you have any questions, turn it over to the agent.
Russian?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I am Steve Rushing. I'm an attorney here in town. Tonight, I'm representing Stravinsky Capital Management LLC. Also present with me are two of their principals, Mr. John Wodis and Steve Brock. And with them is our engineer, Jason Chambliss, on the first row on your left-hand, far-left-hand side. Southbound Timberlands LLC is the current owner of the subject property. It's a 517-acre tract, but 345 of it is what lies in Bullock County, which is what we have tendered for rezoned. The remainder of this same tract, 165 acres, is in Bryan County, and that is the one that James referred to, it just got rezoned. We were on a common track, but they got deferred, and we got ahead of it, so any event since that time, it has been rezoned the rest of this same parcel. So we are just seeking to do the same thing on the northern part of this same parcel to make it a light industrial zone for the construction of a warehousing distribution center, which, as you see, is focused primarily in Bryan County, but does extend over in our county. And again, if that sounds all familiar to you, yes, you heard this before, back in May. We had previously made this same application. We had explained that about Bryan County at that time. Also, at that same time, we had heard some comments from the Roberts family, which has some adjoining property. And so based on those two items, we decided to withdraw our application, allow Bryan County to complete its process, and also we sent our team out to meet with the Roberts family and to discuss water discharge, and they have done that through our engineering and looking at that drainage situation. So that brings us back. We're pleased to say that we have done those items and come back before you now, having addressed those. And as you see, not all of our 345 acres is buildable due to the wetlands that the project will work around. We have roughly 217 acres that are uplands and about 133 acres of wetlands. Most of those wetlands, as you see, lie between our building site and that rural subdivision to the northeast Flemington Woods, which together with the woodlands, the wetlands and woodlands, provide a substantial, natural buffer for those residents and our building site. I'll leave that on the screen there. As you see, it is, those three buildings inside the red line, which is in the Bullock County part, they total right at 3 million square feet. It's important to note that the access, though, is, as James said, through the rest of the project from Bryan County's side. As part of that, we will be working to reconstruct those roads, make them more industrial. That's part of our rezone with Bryan County. This is a multimillion-dollar project, and it will be immediately added to the county tax base following completion of construction. What does that mean? Well, the Walmart Distribution Center paid more than $1 million last year in real estate taxes. Once this is fully built out, we expect to pay that much or more in annual real estate taxes. After reviewing the county departmental review, we accept the staff's analysis. The future land use map of the comprehensive plan does assign this area to the employment district designation. Only point here is that such designation allows for a light industrial zone. In fact, it's the first one listed on the employment district in our comprehensive plan. Now, the warehousing and distribution is a relatively small water user. We will obtain our water and sewer through existing facilities in Bryan County. Now, since the largest part of the project lies just across in Bryan County, as you can see on our site plan, the buildings will have an early suppression, fast response fire protection system driven by a diesel fire pump. Obviously, we hope they never have to turn that thing on, but we anticipate Bullock County and Bryan County reaching an understanding whereby Bryan County will likely provide the fire protection to this facility, but such agreements are routinely made between counties. The staff report this time around does recommend four conditions. I think it was three before, but this, they added a 100-foot buffer along the Roberts side of the property, which we've concurred with as well. So we assert that the existing ordinances, together with the conditions that have been proposed by the county, staff will adequately protect the nearby property owners and minimize impacts. In addition to the county buffer, the additional 100-foot buffer will give that additional protection. So with that, we respectfully request the commission to adopt the staff report and to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of our application for a light industrial zone, including with the staff's suggested conditions. We're fine with that. I'm going to ask if you would permit me, Jason, to step up and address that water drainage issue that we talked about before, if we can be permitted to do that, and then we'll save you any issues.
We did have someone signed up to speak before that, so would, I would ask Mr. Bowie, if he, Bowie, is he here?
I guess, I ain't born enough.
Well, you just signed up. Mr. Rush is here as agent, but you're the first one to sign up, so if you'll come forward, I'll let you speak, and then we'll have...
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm confused about this report, because y'all said it's located on Highway 80. It's not on Highway 80. Kind of confused me when I got ready to look at it. Not the partial we're talking about. My concern is, who's going to be responsible for the waste that they're going to collect? 6,000 tons a month, I mean, a year? Who's going to be responsible for that, since it's in Bullock County? They said there's not going to be much traffic impact. Now, if I'm a smart truck driver, when I leave that facility and I get to 80, I'm going to turn to the right, go down, catch 119, go to 16, and come on where I want to go. I'm not going to go and fight Litchton down there. So that does have an impact on our traffic. The Coastal Regional Commission said that this is, they're concerned about the long-term impact. And, you know, these large buildings, they talk about drainage, and they talk about it's natural drainage. If you look at that land, it's a Flatwoods-type area, and that's all natural drainage. It takes a while for that water to get out of there, and it doesn't take much buildings or changes in the soil to affect that natural drainage. I live in the Flatwoods. I know how it works. So it's, you know, there is a drainage issue there. And then the wetlands, I'm concerned about that, but the thing that, I guess, it really gets me is that we're letting people from New Hampshire come down and buy up our precious Bullock County land just for the money.
Thank you, sir. Maybe some of these questions can be answered. All right. All right, this will be Mr. Jason Chambliss.
Good evening. I was going to touch on, first and foremost, the drainage discussion. As Steve mentioned, we met with the Roberts out on site. They were gracious enough to tour us around. They'd been familiar with that site, and so they showed us the existing logging ditches, and so we got a good feel for the land. We also were released by Stravinsky to allow us to do some preliminary storm pond modeling based on the layout we've got here, so we feel comfortable with the, with our ability to design a site and a pond system that will follow the requirements of Bullock County and as far as detention and stormwater conveyance. So we understand, we have a good understanding of that storm, so we feel comfortable with that. I will clarify one thing. I was whispered to me by the Stravinsky team as I walked up, they're actually willing, the 100-foot buffer was the condition that was requested. They're willing to do a 200-foot buffer on that edge, and if you're not sure where that is, if we're the three buildings, the short end of those buildings, it would be on that upland piece right there. They're prepared to do a 200-foot buffer there to address, to address that comment. And with that, I've got, if I've got time, if there's questions I need to answer from anybody.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Chambliss?
I got one. We had up to 20 inches of rain two weeks ago. That much imperium surface, where's all that water going?
So, well, in that situation, that's like a 200- or 300-year storm, so that's kind of unprecedented, so there's different requirements for that. But for the purposes of what you're required to do when you're developing a site, that's where the detention would come in. A lot of times, we assume, when we're designing something like this, we assume it's going to take about 20% of the area is going to be ponds, and then we look at how deep those ponds are. And then you route all those, all those buildings and all that storm drain to the ponds, so they detain that water before they release it. Yeah.
Our house has been where it was since 1959. It had 80 inches of water in it.
Well, yeah, and I...
I'm wondering the last time y'all presented.
Yes, sir. And I, well, and just as a little bit of a side here, I imagine there'll be some, a lot of data gathered from that storm, and a lot of things will probably change regionally from that standpoint, as far as how drainage is handled.
Where's the water going to go?
Well, in this case, the water will go where it goes now. So we talked about, if you see on the edges, there's ponds, so what we talked about doing after we drove the site is, we realized there's not a single point, you can't put a single pipe and discharge that water in one spot, because it is a flat area. So what we talked about doing was putting a series of control structures that would release that as close to the natural release points as we could, so it doesn't overwhelm that wetland system, because it is a very flat wetland system, and you can see from the ditches that were dug all through there, that everything kind of rises up and goes in all directions. So the intent would be, to the extent we can, to model that as much as we can to match what's already there and try to reduce the impact on the neighboring properties.
How much water you produce with 20 inches of rain on that site?
You got me there. I'd have to run the number. I can get you that answer. I don't have it right now, but I can get you that answer. That's not a problem.
It's a lot.
It is not, it's not a small amount, I can assure you. You're right about that.
21,000 gallons per acre.
Well, there you go. You got me on that one.
These three units that we're discussing tonight, are they on a flat surface compared to the others, or is it below or above, or are they on the same level?
As far as, when the finished elevation of the building?
Yes.
So in most cases, this, if it's a warehouse like it's shown there, it would be a, it would be a dock height, which is four feet above, above the truck court area, typically speaking, and if you look at the existing dep，则 that land, it kind of ridges in the middle anyway, so we try to follow that natural terrain as much as we could and then raise the building on top of that, so you, so it'd probably be up from the existing ground, more or less, and then the truck courts would be lower, then it'd kind of taper off towards the existing, the existing elevations.
I guess what I'm trying to see is, is the water going to run, we're talking about water again?
Uh huh.
Is it going to run from all the existing Bryan County warehouses that way?
No, 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 no. It'll, the Bryan County buildings will have their own, and a lot of times when these are developed, you split them up anyway, so you try to kind of divide up the storm drainage where you can, but the Bryan County buildings, that water would go to the Bryan County wetlands and the Bryan County, so we, we try to, like I said before, we try to maintain as much of the existing drainage as we can, so the Bryan County buildings would drain to those wetlands in Bryan County.
All right, we are out of time, but Mr. Brock did not get to add anything. Do I need to ask for the indulgence of the board to add five minutes' time to each side? All right, I'd like to add five minutes to each side, so Mr. Brock, you can come forward?
I'm good. I think Jason covered everybody then.
All right, then if we don't need it, the opposing side, Mr. Bowie, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I'd just like to know where the water's going. They ain't answered the question yet. Where is it going? Going north, south, east, or west?
Based on our preliminary analysis, there's a portion of those wetlands that actually kind of go northeast and a portion go south, so, I mean, when it's Flatwoods like this, it kind of goes in all directions at a certain point. But again, we try to manage that water to follow the existing drainage course as much as we can.
How deep are these drainage ponds you plan on digging?
The depth would be, well, the depth is, well, there's two, there's two definitions of the depth.
I'm just curious of at what level the water is going to constantly sit at, because obviously they're not going to be dry.
Correct. Well, and usually they're not, because what you have is, we try to maintain at least six feet of depth from the water level down, and a lot of times, that works out anyway, because your pipes are coming from the warehouse facilities, so you keep those wet, so it doesn't grow algae and stuff in the water. And then the elevation, we try to keep the normal water elevation at about the same elevation as the discharge point, so it would be about the wetland elevation, and that's where we would have to do as a part of our design, a detailed, more detailed storm analysis to figure out the, what the elevations will be in that wetland during storms, so we can model our system so it's compatible. So, I mean, usually it's about, from the normal water to the top of the bank, there's usually at least about four feet, maybe up to six feet. It just depends on how big the pond is now.
That's what I'm curious about, is how much room is there to take? How many millions of square feet did you say are going in here?
Yeah.
Is there that much room in these ponds to take that much water?
Yeah, yeah.
On five inches of rain, much less 20.
Yeah, we would have, well, we would have to, there are certain storms you're required to design to. I think we modeled it in our preliminary analysis, for the 25-year storm, the 50-year storm, and the 100-year storm, those are just kind of annual percentages. And what we do is, we look at how high they'll rise, and then you set the top of bank and the normal water to make sure you've got enough capacity to manage those storms, and you release it at the rate, the pre-development rate.
I only ask because I've built these before where you design it, but that's not where the water actually sits, and it's, you know, there's a facility that I built in Chatham County that it was designed for the water to sit four feet below the level, and the water sits at the top constantly.
Yeah. Well, that's where, I mean, that's where the engineer, we earn our money when we, looking at the downstream condition. We really have to understand, and that's why I was so grateful to the Roberts, they let us kind of tour around and understand how those wetlands operate, because that's what we realized right away, is it was helpful to see that, but we also recognize when we come back with a detailed design, we're going to have to take a really close look at that wetland system in its entirety to understand what that elevation of the discharge is, so we can, so we're modeling it right way.
Mr. Pope, would some of that have to be addressed at the conceptual site plan stage when it comes back to us if it were to be approved? when it comes back to us if it were to be approved?
Specifically for the design of the ponds, that would, that would be through the preliminary plan phase. And more or less, Brad would be looking at that and the site several plans. But, yeah, the conceptual site plan process would give this board its opportunity to look at and make sure everything is the way it's presented tonight, or if things change, work through any of those changes. So if they come back and say, we want a smaller warehouse, then that's what you would consider. It doesn't look like it could really go any bigger. But, you know, so I don't think you would get those fine details until it gets a little further along than after conceptual site plan. And of course, Brad, again, reviews those from the county, so.
And we're happy, we're happy, we've already done some work on the pond modeling, so we're happy at the conceptual stage to submit whatever we have, and we can tweak it if we need to. We have no problem with that at all.
Has there been a current test on what the current water table is at over there?
No, we haven't done that yet.
Well, there are a couple of weeks between our meeting and the county commissioners' meeting where the final determination is made, so maybe you have some time to gather some more information.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a county engineer a question, Mr. Deal? If my memory is right, they, the developer asked to file a stormwater management plan to be compliant with our ordinance, right?
That's correct.
And, well, with the, with the new requirements, are, will they be required to have a maintenance pond on the stormwater infrastructure?
I will have to check that. I'm not sure the answer to that.
Yeah.
Under the new ordinance.
I mean, that, maybe that's where we want to coordinate with Bryan County too, since it's largely in Bryan County, but with that much impervious surface that they're going to have. I mean, to Mr. Bass's point, I would argue that the rain's going to come, it's going to come off the impervious surfaces faster, and that's what increases the risk of flooding. However, you know, for this amount of impervious surface, the maintenance of those stormwater facilities are going to be critical. And this is maybe, in total, larger than the Walmart distribution center, if I got my metrics right. So I'm just saying, as we go forward, we probably need to have some kind of an instrument to make sure that the stormwater system is maintained somewhere with, you know, where Bryan County and Bullock County can get kumbaya with it, because I've seen the big failures come when there's no maintenance of the stormwater facilities, the detention and retention ponds, and the pipes and so forth. You can create a lot more problems when those aren't cared for properly.
And is the county, is the county tax dollars going to be used to maintain that system, or is?
No.
No?
No, sir.
Okay.
If my math's correct, you'll have 69 acres of buildings. That's not counting paved areas. On 69 acres of buildings, you'll have 1,863,000 gallons of water with 1 inch of rain. And you get them to 20 inches of rain, where's it going to go?
Well, if the-
I wish that it's going to go to the same place it went when it rained 20 inches this time, but it will be more managed, at least from this site.
But it's going to be going a lot quicker. You can't manage it when it gets loose like that.
I've got some questions. Who's, what county is responsible for police services here? And are we going to have to go around this whole site into Bryan County to get to the back of this if there's a police issue, since there's only access from Bryan County?
Well, it's my belief that, you know, particularly with the Sheriff's Department, you know, law enforcement can go outside of their jurisdiction if necessary, but, you know, we're, I believe we have a mutual aid agreement for fire with Pembroke. But we, we've been talking to Bryan County about this, and ultimately, if you want responsive service, Bryan County's going to have to answer emergency services and law enforcement first. And then we're probably going to end up being a backup, just because where the access is going to be in Bryan County. That isn't to say we may not take a call, but those are, those are just, that's minutia that we're trying to work through with Bryan County, should these approvals are, should these approvals be granted.
All right, end of discussion. Do we have a motion, a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion, a recommendation, denial. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second to deny? All those in favor? We're going to recommend denial to the county commissioners. You do have several weeks to come up with some different plans, and it'll be heard here October 1st, 5:30 PM. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, agenda item number four. FNT Investments LLC have submitted an application to rezone approximately 36.5 acres from R40 to R3, which is a residential 15,000-square-foot section, for the purpose of creating a multifamily housing development. The property is located on Burke Alter Road, and Steve Rushin will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, this property, again, is located on Burke Alter Road, very close to the roundabout on Burke Alter at Five Points. So, I guess northeast of Highway 67, but south of US Highway 80. This is the current zoning map for the area, in which you'll see the properties currently zoned R40. But there are multiple planned subdivisions nearby, but also there are agricultural uses nearby as well. There, there's a higher-density planned unit development previously approved some years ago, but has not been developed. But the area has seen some, some growth, probably more, more so than other areas in the county. But under R3, which is a multiple-family zoning, specifically, this would be townhomes, so it could be fee-simple townhomes. So R3 covers a multitude of multifamily uses. And this is the sketch that was provided by the applicant. You'll see how it fits onto the property. And this is the property at our site visit when we placed the zoning sign at the property. So with that, staff recommends approval with conditions.
All right, Mr. Rushing?
You get me again. This time, however, I am representing FNT Investments LLC and its assene Frank Joe LLC. We had a contract and we assigned it, and we got postponed with this meeting. So since then, we have actually acquired the property. So now Frank Joe owns it, and the principal here is Jason Franklin. Also have with us, I hope, one of our engineers, Evan Bennett.
Bowie.
Yep, he made it. Thank you. As I said, this property is now owned by Frank Joe. It was acquired by, from Walter Ray Beasley in July. Now, Frank Joe are local builders and developers right here in Bullock County. The property is presently located east of the city limits, right there near Five Points. As James pointed out, it backs up to SNS Railroad Bed Road in front some Burke Alter Road. We are requesting the entire 36-and-a-half-acre tract be zoned R3. That's why we're here before you tonight. The R3 zoning classification could provide for a potential of up to 192 residential units if all of our tests prove worthy of that. Now, there are some wetlands, as you see them kind of to the northwest, but we certainly are working outside of those, and there are no flood zones on this property at all. So we expect very little impact far as water is concerned. There is some natural water flow that will flow from our stormwater pond that we look to create. Obviously, we will conduct further testing and engineering. And again, we may not be able to construct quite that many units, but that's our plan. It will include some common areas, and of course, plenty of green space in addition to that stormwater pond. We have proposed two accesses, both on Burke Alter Road. Certainly, we would comply with the county road access requirements and plan to seek those approvals. We are aware of the traffic issues on Burke Alter Road, but we do believe that the proximity of this site to Five Points and the newly-installed roundabout there would give residents multiple options for travel in addition to Burke Alter Road. In fact, there's three from the roundabout, there's three accesses toward the Statesboro area and three toward the Brooklyn area. We also assert that the standards of review for a rezone for the contemplated use support our application, and the county did a good job in addressing those in their report, where they by recommended approval of our application with those conditions listed. Of course, the principal standard is its compatibility of the proposed use with the existing uses. As I mentioned, the property is bounded on the north by the SNS Railroad Bed Road, and though there would be no vehicular access to it, there are multiple developments along that SNS Railroad Bed Road, the closest one being an R2-zoned development just north of us. And then again, at Five Points, just to the east of us, there exists already an R3 development like the one that we're seeking. So they're kind of in every direction. To the south across Burke Alter Road are some other residential developments. One's an R25, and one is an Ag 5-type development. But we assert that the proposed use will not adversely impact the surrounding uses, nor will those uses adversely impact our proposed use. The staff report adequately addresses the other factors that govern the grant of a rezone, which support our application. We have no objections to the first five listed conditions that the staff proposes to any approval. We do ask that Condition 6 not be adopted. In lieu thereof, we would propose to connect the development with a walkway to the walking trail, where residents are more likely to walk and where on, rather than on Burke Alter, where there are currently no other walkways to connect to. As you can see, this tract is within the county's future land use plan for the suburban neighborhood character area, which anticipates the R3 zone that we seek. And in fact, it is listed in the future land use plan right after R2. We further assert that it's compatible with all the uses in the general area, particularly the Greystone Townhome development that lies just one tax parcel over at Five Points. Evan hopefully can address any of the engineering or type questions that we have. So on behalf of Frank Joe, we would respectfully request that you adopt the staff's report and recommend approval of our application for the R3 zone for the proposed cottage-type development. We will also try to address those questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Jeff Hodges. I have no position, so start the clock. Over.
Appreciate you guys hearing me tonight. So looking over the packet, I saw the impact factors that you guys had listed, and two of those were positive, four of those were negative, and five of those were negative. So economic impact, law enforcement, EMS, recreation, and the impact on the school system were all negative. So the majority of your decision was negative, but, so I would hope that, you know, this would be turned down. I would argue that it has a huge impact on traffic. I've lived Cobb Road, which is across there from this development, since 1997, and the traffic has increased fivefold in the last two years alone. When I go to leave for work in the morning, I can't even, it takes three traffic light cycles to be able to get off the road now, much less with 192 townhomes generating 1,405 peak-hour trips a week. There's multiple signs all up and down Burke Alter Road for more subdivisions to be approved. So not only is the traffic impact from this subdivision or townhome, you're going to have all the other ones that are in the works that are trying to be approved or already have been approved impacting that traffic as well. The school system impacts. So I work for Bryan County Schools, and part of my job is planning and develop, for schools being built there in the future. And hopefully, you know, you guys are working closely with the school system, because one thing that happens is, I noticed this was for Statesboro High School, which is at or near capacity according to y'all's report. The state of Georgia doesn't loan or give money to schools to build new schools until that school is full. And that's to protect taxpayers, and that makes sense. So once a school gets full, then they can earn state funding. But they can't do that until they redistrict, if they have available space in other schools. So if Statesboro High School fills up and there's space at Portal High School, Bullock County Schools are going to be expected to do one of two things. That's redistrict, send kids to Portal, or they're going to be expected to fund the bill themselves, you know, put the money locally, which could lead to a tax increase on all citizens, you know, in situations like that. So I just encourage to work with the school system and understand the impact that that has on the school systems. Next argument would be the character of the neighborhood. I would argue that this is a, is not the character of our neighborhood. I live across, all of our lots are five or 10 acres. The subdivisions that have been built there since then, you know, are nice half-acre to three-acre lots, brick, single-family homes, not, you know, you know, 192 apartments, you know, on a very small field across the road, which is low, high-density, low-cost apartments. So I would argue that that does not fit the character of our neighborhood at all. Another thing I would encourage you guys to consider is, it seems like all of our counties in our local area are racing to build thousands of homes because Hyundai is here. I could sit through the Bryan County meetings because it impacts our school system, and they just approved 2,500 homes in Pembroke, which is going to be interesting, because there's not 2,500 homes currently in Pembroke. So they're racing to develop properties. Bullock County's doing the same thing. Effingham's been doing it for years. You know, there've already been over 8,500 homes approved in the three counties, and there's only that many jobs available. So I just, I just wonder, like, what's the rush? You know, can we, can we slow down a little bit? It makes us all nervous here. And I would just argue that if we can't deny this, which I would sure hope that we could, could we at least increase the buffer, the landscape buffer on the front of it, and reduce the number of homes? You know, I personally would love to see a subdivision rather than a bunch of apartments, you know, 192 apartments, you know, squeezed into a field. So those are my conditions. And I appreciate y'all listening to me. I was a principal for 11 years, and I know that most of the time when people show up, they're just here to complain, and you guys unfortunately have to hear a lot of it, so I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Mr. Edward Wolf?
Hi. I'd just like to reiterate what Mr. Hodges was saying. I don't think this meets the character of the neighborhood. I live on Railroad Bed. I would also ask if this does get approved not to allow the road, or the path to connect with the path right there. There's a parking lot right there where a lot of young folks park in the morning and such to go on runs, walks early in the day. And I came from a smaller, lower-income housing community, my wife and I saved for years to get where we are, and I am concerned that we are putting on right back bias. I have three small, four small children. My neighbor, who couldn't be here tonight, also has three small children, and we both moved from the Savannah area because the area around us was growing, and we saw crime and stuff. My neighbor is a first responder. He's on shift right now, and he wanted to be here to basically say what I'm saying. We oppose this, and if it must be passed, please don't connect a walking path to that walking path right by that parking lot where lots of people park and our beautiful little path. And we thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Ben Bowie?
I'm about to say it all. Appreciate the time. Now, I go back to the report that, the departmental review. 460 people, they max out at the 2.4, 460, 124 in the school system. I mean, we ain't got room for them. The county's already ordered four mobile classrooms for them to put out. The county's already ordered four mobile classrooms for them to, to put out because we ain't got room for the kids. We just need to slow down, like he says, slow down and let the sheriff's department, the schools catch up. And if you hadn't been at 67 and Burkalter Road at four o'clock, I mean, at six o'clock in the morning or six o'clock in the afternoon, you're in for a treat. It's like a zoo out there from all the people. And it says the level of service should be for sheriff deputies should be 49, right? I mean, that's what it says here. How many do we have that's patrolling? 33? I mean, that's what it says right here. So here we are and your loss, level of service impact is 1.32. And I disagree with that number. I calculated something different. But these things are cumulative. They're not one. You can't throw this one away and say we start all over again. They're cumulative. Sometime they're going to reach the one, you know? They're going to get there. The fire department EMS report says that if current status is not increased, there's going to be a deficiency. Same thing, we need a new fire truck if, if this. It's in the report. I mean, all you gotta do is read it. And we talk about the recreational parks. I'm sure they're about full now. I mean, if you go around and look, you put 100 more kids out there, what's that going to do? You're just running out of time. You're running out of space. We just need to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, the last sign up to speak would be Mr. Bennett, the engineer. And I guess he's for, he is for, so go back to Mr. Rushin's time.
Hey, Evan Bennett with OCG Bill. Just real quick, Mr. Rushin addressed most everything. I'm not quite as eloquent as him. That's why I'm an engineer. So on the traffic front, one thing that, that I want to point out is the developers agreed to give up 15 feet of property to give to the county as right of way, so that'll allow for any road improvements that are needed. And any turn lanes that are, that are warranted for this development will be installed by the developer. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Rushin, if you'll come back up if you've got some time left.
I'll try to address a couple items mentioned. And, and one thing focused was the timing, you know, allowing people to catch up. Well, you know, if you approve this tonight or recommend it and they approve it next month, that the county, 190 houses automatically appear there. There's going to be infrastructure built, water and sewer, lift stations constructed. We're, we're probably looking two years, you know, before these units are there and there's people living in it. So you've got to plan ahead. You can't just wait and it's the timing thing. So it, you know, we've got two years to plan for these things. As for the impact factors that was referenced, I think by Mr. Hodges, those two or three that he mentioned are all part of one of the zoning factors, number four. There's eight zoning factors. The impacts that he mentioned relate to one of those factors. If you look at all the zoning factors, which is what the standards that you go by, most of those do still support our application. As far as the traffic, again, that's why we were required, the county now requires a traffic impact study from engineers, which we have to pay for and provide, which we've done, and the county has adopted that and added to their conditions those things that the traffic impact study will require for those kind of traffic calming measures. And again, both the school board and, and law enforcement will have those, that, that time that we're trying to get built out to address those issues at their respective offices. And again, I think they're looking, the folks that talked are both to the south of this property. Again, there are very similar developments in other directions from this particular development. Again, we'll, we'll look into the county as far as what the buffer that they believe is appropriate. We will follow the county standards on that. But again, allow us that time. It's going to take us that time to get buildings there and folks in them anyway.
All right, I have one comment.
Yes.
Burkalter is a very busy, scary road at times. I disagree with the elimination of condition number six because at least a pedestrian walkway would at least give some buffer between that's, that division and Burkalter Road.
Yeah, you, again, I'm not sure where they go from there. That's why we were looking at the walkway, but you know, one of those items will give us some additional, I guess, foot traffic, pedestrian traffic.
What's the, what's the reason that you wanted to eliminate six? Just because there's no additional sidewalks?
Yeah, that there's really no way for them to go where, and again, I know, mentioned somebody mentioned they didn't want to hook to the existing walkway, but you know, that's what a sidewalk is, is walkway.
Are these sale or rental units?
Rental units.
192 rental units. Any other question from this board?
He mentioned adding 15-foot and possibly turn lanes. If you add that on, that's going to move that first row of buildings back some.
The wetlands.
Is that going to change your whole?
Well, again, this is a sketch, you know, this, we have to provide our best case scenario at the zoning level. There's a whole sketch plan and preliminary plat and all that and that takes into account a whole lot of other things. And yeah, it, it is very likely to change from what you see there once we get all the...
It's going to be city and water and sewer.
Yes.
Are, are these units going to be owned and maintained by Mr. Franklin's company or is he planning on selling them to some type of third-party investment?
Yeah, he's got a company that manages his rentals. Three seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, ladies, we'll entertain a motion of recommendation. The other six, the other five conditions are acceptable, Mr. Rushing.
How far is the closest R3 to this?
I believe it's at Five Points on the Greystone.
Those duplexes.
Townhouses, I think those are.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's correct. Now the roundabout, yeah. I think that what was previously approved as planned unit development had some...
How many, how many units are in that other development?
The planned unit development? Well...
Big guess.
Back then it was over 500, but I don't think they ever came through with the plan. So I think the PUD is really obsolete.
Yeah, I think they'll have to come back to you all to, to revive it, but...
What's in there now?
Oh, for... Of course, that was built before I came, but based off what, what I'm seeing there's units that sell individual, you know, they're attached, but they, they are separate owners, at least for tax purposes, but...
And those are not rental units? Those are...
Well, I don't, I mean, there's no prohibition on renting, renting a house if you, you know, if you own it, but...
But one, one owner doesn't hold, own that whole development is what you're saying? Those are just...
I mean, I don't have that information right in front of me, so I don't want to say yes or no, but...
Gentlemen, ladies, we need a recommendation.
I'll make a motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, a second. All right, all those in favor? All right, that's two to one. We are going to recommend denial to the county commissioners. Again, October 1st, 5:30 in this room. Everybody looks, well, it's at 7:30. I have a minute to break about 7:30. All right, agenda item number five. Five B Holdings LLC has submitted an application to rezone approximately four acres from R25 to R2, which are two family residential 15,000 square foot lots for the purpose of building seven two-family dwellings. The property is located at 701 Pat's Lane and Chris Gohegan will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you probably can recall, I think back in October, November of last year, this property was, was applied for a rezone and went through the process and was ultimately denied as a R3, in which the intent, I think, was the same at that time where duplexes on individual lots, but the R2 zone I think is going to be basically your, your only changes from back then. But I'll go through and refresh. Let's see. All right, so the approximate location, again, Pat's Lane, Sweetheart Lane and a, off of Highway 24. And Pat's Lane to our, as I recall and to my knowledge, is a county-owned road. It's a paved road. So with it being a county road, you know, the owner could go in and separate out lots without, without having to get any formal approval by this board because it was, you know, done at some prior time. But currently, as you see in the aerials, there's end zoning. Well, zoning is R25. There's nearby R2, maybe even some units that are in R25 that predate the zoning and were captured in R25, but are really duplex units or two-family units. Again, R2 was the, the nearby zoning that kind of matched what was, you know, what the use would be. There's three units, three duplex units, so I guess six dwelling units total currently on the property. And this is the sketch that was provided by the applicant. Again, going back to what was previously presented, it's the same, same sketch, same number of units being proposed, but those would be duplex units. And then this, this is Pat's Lane as a, again, at the time of our site visit. And the units that are currently in place. And so with that, staff recommends approval. And unless the board has questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Chris Gohegan.
What is the water source for this development? For this development?
I think there's a, well, there's an existing community water system.
Community?
Yes, and so it would be required to have one.
Mr. Gohegan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Chris Gohegan. I'm a local attorney, pleased to be here tonight on behalf of Five B Holdings LLC and its sole member, Rob Bowen. Mr. Bowen's the local business owner who lives just across the county line in Canler County. You've heard about a number of very large transformative projects tonight. I'm proud to present you with a little project that we are nevertheless proud to bring before you and hope that you will review favorably. We are dealing with four acres on this rezone request. It's four acres out of an original parcel that was 6.2 acres. 2.2 acres of the original parcel was developed back in the early 90s with the three existing duplexes that you see on the site plan. My client, Five B Holdings, acquired the property in May of this year, did some cleanup on the property, obtained a detailed site plan, and, and we're back to present this, this request to you. We are seeking to rezone this four acres from R25 to R2, which is two-family residential. The plan for this site is to develop seven duplexes that will be two or three bedrooms. You can see from the site plan and how the property's been developed. This has been the plan for this parcel for 30-plus years. That cul-de-sac and, and, and street was constructed for development on both sides and my client is just looking to finish out that plan after a 30-year holding period. The existing structures, as I mentioned, I think the first was built in 92 and then the other's built in 94, so they've been there for some time, as has the road. You may recall this project, as Mr. Pope mentioned, it came before you last year following an application by the previous owner, which was filed in August of 2023. That application covered all 6.2 acres and was a request for a rezone to an R3 designation, which ultimately was denied by the commission. As I mentioned, my client acquired the property in May of this year after that process was complete, has done some work on it and now brings it back to you. This, we appreciate the staff's detailed report and consideration of the project and their recommendation of approval. We'll note that the long, the future land use plan designates this as a suburban corridor, suburban neighborhood. Suburban corridor neighborhoods consist of mixed uses, which would allow commercial uses in many cases, and specifically an R2 residential designation is allowed. Suburban neighborhoods are characterized by one-to-two-story residences with landscaping on all sides and a moderate degree of separation between units, which is exactly what we've presented you with this project tonight. I happened to be in the room on another project when this case came before you the last time, and I know that a number of members of the community, primarily folks who live in the Sweetheart Lane neighborhood next door, had a number of concerns that they presented to you. I was here, so I heard those concerns and I've talked to my client about them. The three that I really recall are whether, were that the prior owner wasn't necessarily being the best steward of the property. The neighborhood didn't really care for how the, the lots appeared. My client, since acquiring it, has been out there to do some cleanup on the site and we believe they, they, they look attractive and are ready for development. I'll note, this is a property that has been completely clear-cut at times. It's, it's reforested to some degree over the years since timber was last removed, but my client has, has it looking good. Another concern was that a multi-family designation, which is, R3 is a multi-family designation, wasn't consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So in this application, we have modified from an R3 request to an R2 request. Our two requests is specifically designated for two-family homes, which a duplex fits that characteristic. It would not allow for multi-family development on any of these sites, so we hope that addresses some of those concerns. The final concern from the neighborhood was, was primarily a concern that you've heard already tonight. They don't want to see additional traffic in their neighborhood. And I hear that concern and I know it's a concern that's felt across our community. What we've got here is a small piece of property. It's located off Bobby Michael Road. Bobby Michael Road is not a commuter route. It's not a pass-through route. In fact, it ends in terms of the paved area just past the entrance to Sweetheart Lane. It has relatively ready access to 24 right at Mill Creek Park and number of access points for people to filter out of this area. So while we can't say that this won't create additional traffic on Bobby Michael Road and on Pat's Lane, we feel that it's a manageable concern given the size of the development we're talking here. We also note that Sweetheart Lane is a community primarily of duplexes. There are four, over 40 units zone, many of them zoned R2 on the, in the Sweetheart Lane neighborhood. And then there's the three existing duplexes that have been on Pat's Lane for 30 years. We think it's an attractive project. This is an area of our community that is attractive for new residents and for young families. This is a project that offers an affordable option for those folks in a relatively compact size in terms of scope of work. So I'll remain available to answer any questions you have or concerns from the audience and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gohegan. All right, Mr. Ben Bowie?
I pass.
Okay. All right, Dennis Nelson. Now, there are several sign up to speak, so remember if you've got 10 minutes total.
Okay, darling. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Dennis Nelson. I live at 613 Sweetheart Lane in Pat, in Pelleton Place. Thank you for the freedom and opportunity to address you on the subject and request of the rezoning of Pat's Lane. As you know, this is a great concern to the residents of Pelleton Place community. Several months ago, we had a similar meeting about this same issue and the community unanimously requested you deny this request, which you did. We gave you adequate reason to deny this request, such as failing street, Sweetheart Lane, no organized or planned... Lane, no organized or planned stormwater system, and an impassable dirt road, which you just mentioned, which is impassable when it rains. So I'm sure they'll be going down Sweetheart Lane. And most of all, when it's wet, the safety of our community and especially of our children. Since that time, we have seen no changes and no proposed changes. The conditions are the same as they were or even worse. Let me read you a paragraph from your November 7, 2023, 5:30 p.m. staff meeting report, and I quote. It says, "Lindsey Martin," the applicant at that time, "gave an overview of the current properties and homes near the proposed property. He agreed that the roads were currently in bad shape," his words in your report, "but he stated that they were county-maintained roads, and he could not take responsibility to fix the roads because of the cost." He stated that he would try to keep people using the dirt road, which is Billy Michael Lane. First of all, the dirt road is impassable when wet, and furthermore, who would leave a paved road for a dirt road when it's not necessary? The residents of Pelleton Place cannot afford to repair the roads either. I have in my hand a piece of the pavement of Sweetheart Lane. As you can see, this is not an asphalt road, and it's not a concrete road. It's a tar road with a little bit of gravel on top of it. One layer of 3/4-inch, number 57 stone on some tar. Go out and take a look at it. It's deteriorated from the center to the edge and from the edge to the center. How many 80,000-pound concrete and supply trucks you think this road, this tar-gravel road can support, especially the curbs? There is only one person benefiting from this proposed zoning change, the developer, which has already said in the November 5 report that the roads were not adequate to support this project. However, it shows he has no concern for the well-being of the community, the neighborhood, or the residents. Closing, I have a few pictures I would like to show you to point out what our concerns are. One of them is the condition of Sweetheart Lane. The other is the water, uncontrolled water drainage, and the water that is ponding at the end of Trevor Lane, which is at the end of Pat's Lane. And I'm asking, is anybody in the city even considered the additional runoff water that will come off the paved driveways that will run down to this lower area? Here's a picture of the paved road showing the pavement separated. Here's a picture of the curbs, showing the deterioration of the curbs with just normal automobile traffic, as you can see here. Here's the curve on Sweetheart Lane, which has to be patched almost weekly. If I can get these pictures to separate.
Can you pass those pictures up here to us?
Mr. Nelson, if you could just bring the pictures up here and pass them.
Oh, I'd be glad to.
Madam Chair, we do have the camera projector I can turn on.
Okay, well, all right.
Here, leave the county.
Give them to Mr. Pope.
Also.
You can start the clock, yeah.
These are the road. This is the lady. This lady's 80-plus years old.
Upside down.
And she can't get out of her house, and she's also handicapped. Here are the pictures that the county made, and there's no drainage at all whatsoever. You want to give them those?
If you want to talk about them, you can just swap them on.
I guess you just hand them to them. He's got half of them. Give them the, let them pass them down. They can do that quicker than I can do that. At 82 years old, a lot of these things are beyond me. I apologize for the way I'm dressed. I came straight from work, and I almost ran out of time.
Thank you, sir. We do appreciate it. And we'll have the pictures.
In closing, I'd say that the community of Pelleton Place asks you to also deny this claim as they did last time for the same reasons. It's not, even the owner that was the previous owner admits that the roads will not support this addition.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Dean Hendrix? Hendry?
Hendrix. Dion Hendrix?
Dion.
Yes. Oh, yeah, right. Yes, I was here last time, and Dennis is my neighbor. I've been there 25, 28 years. When we first got there, it was a dirt road. The county came out, had a conversation with us, and said, hey, you know what? We want to put a paved road out here and everything, because we kept asking. And they said, what if you give up some of your property? We'll put a paved road there. It won't be the best, but we'll put something there for y'all. We were like, no problem. It's going to be for low traffic, so it won't be a whole lot of in and out of here, but we'll get you something to get by. We were like, yes, we gave up our property. And for 30 years, for 20-something years, nothing has been done, no changes and everything. Then they change up and say, well, you know, people want to add to the, add duplexes or multi-family homes, which is fine. I know about growth. But the thing about it is the road need to be repaired. There are no sidewalks. There are no streetlights. You go out there in the middle of the night, it's pitch dark. When people come around that curve, sometimes you have to get off the road because we have people that run off that road into the ditch. And it's just dangerous, and adding more people down there, another multi-family residence down there is just going to add to the problem. Recently had a fire, attempted a fire or something out there. Went outside, the fire trucks parked on the side of the road. Could not go down the dirt road. There were some that went down the dirt road, but EMS came. Instead of going down the dirt road to the fire, EMS had to come the opposite way and go down Sweetheart Lane and then turn left on Billy Michael Road to try to come up that way because the road conditions are so bad. And so I know somebody else may want to talk, but I appreciate y'all listening to me, and I do address you as the board, like you said. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrix. All right. I am not sure, is this Hendrix as well?
Hendrix.
Is there another Hendrix?
Oh, no, no. That was, why aren't she gone?
Oh, okay. Then Ms. Sharon Hill?
Sharon Hill.
Chris Gohegan was right, but he's already spoken. Mr. Nelson, here are your pictures.
Okay.
No Sharon Hill? All right, Mr. Rob Bowen.
That's my client. I see this time to me.
Okay, all right, we'll wait. Okay, Lance Hodges? Just Lance Hodges?
Hey, how are y'all? My name is Lance Hodges. Me and my wife, Donna, have been living at Sweetheart Lane for 33 years. We had our house built on a five-acre lot. I'm opposing of the multi-family unit because I'm trying to protect my investment. And also, it will bring more people and more traffic on our roads and neighborhood, which will cause more road damage and more trash throw out. We're already putting up with loud music and speeding. Building these units will only make things worse. Also, the road is in bad shape. The road is made up with thin layer of tar and gravel, and also, the road is not up to code. Also, the water system isn't the best. It goes off all the time, and it takes some hours to turn it back on. So what I'm saying is there needs to be a lot of upgrades in our neighborhood, and that's all I have to say. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. George Jenkins?
My name is George Jenkins. I was here last year, and it's basically the same situation. My wife and I have been living on Sweetheart Lane for nearly 40 years. And when we first moved there, everything was dirt roads. My wife and I would go down whenever the traffic was, I mean, people were having trouble getting, a few people that lived there, and Judge Peele was one of them that lived right down the road from. They would quite often go in the ditch, and my wife would take them home with the kids and that kind of thing, and that's been going on. When that, it got to the point where we said, you know, we needed, we need some pavement here. And we talked to the county. They said that in order to pave it, the people across the road did not want to give up any property. We would have to give up property. I had 10 acres on the corner of Billy Michael and Sweetheart Lane. We gave up the property along that we owned, and all of these other people that have homes on that road gave up property so we could get that pavement in there. And the rest of Sweetheart Lane, it ended right there where Billy Michael came in, and the rest of Sweetheart Lane is still not paved, and it's still a mess. And every time it rains, the county, the county told us at one time, our road was one of the highest maintenance little short pieces of road that they had to maintain. Well, the same thing's going on with that now. So that's not helped, been helped. We were going to get some improvements made on the road from the last time. That didn't happen. There were people sent out there and scraped the edges of the road, and they patched a few holes in the road. But what we found, that road's in such bad shape, when they put the patches in and cars run over it, the water that's under there has to go somewhere, so it comes out on the other side of the patch. So the patches moved down the road. They're cracked everywhere, and it's deplorable. And they were going to do something about the speed problems we had, people running up and down the road, and they went in and put a few speed limit signs up. That was a waste of time, and we still have people driving down that road 60 and 70 mile an hour, with kids walking on the road and things like that. So we've got a number of issues with the things that have been going on that were going to be corrected for the situation last year, and it's still there. It hadn't been improved. So I hope that this group will recommend its denial again, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gohegan, you've got some time left.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I'm used to referring to people as judge. I apologize. I called you the judge there a second ago. I appreciate the concerns expressed by the people who live in this area and their desire to protect their community. What I'm hearing from all of these folks really is a consistent message that they're not necessarily satisfied with some of the existing conditions in their communities. They include street conditions, drainage, lack of infrastructure, sidewalks, lights, curb and gutter, and they're worried that those conditions won't be improved by this project. I note that as with respect to the impact on Sweetheart Lane, Pat's Lane is all the way at the front of the neighborhood. There couldn't be less impact for this traffic directly onto Sweetheart Lane, given the placement of this road on Sweetheart Lane.
Remember, remember that we have to be.
Excuse me? Sorry. Thank you. And then as to the other conditions of the neighborhood as they exist right now, frankly, I don't think that the owners of these four acres can be forced to bear the burden of the conditions that are in this neighborhood. These are county-related issues largely that I'm hearing about with respect to the infrastructure. This community predates the new subdivision ordinance. So things like curb and gutter, sidewalk lighting that might have been required if this was a modern subdivision weren't required when it was installed. And this project will comply with the new ordinance and is consistent with the character of the neighborhood as developed under the prior ordinance. So we've got a client who just in May purchased these four acres with a plan to put these seven duplexes on them. There's already 46 units of a similar character right in the area. While we certainly can't say that these units won't have any additional impact on the community, we present to you that those impacts are manageable and are foreseeable and are envisioned by the future land use plan. And we just ask that you look favorably on this request, allow these developers to put these units in this area, which is attractive. There'd be, there's a market for these units, and it's consistent with the character of the area. Directly across Sweetheart Lane, there's existing R2-zoned units that have identical uses. And then, as I mentioned, for over 30 years, there's been three identical units already on Pat's Lane. The impervious structure of Pat's Lane is already there. It's been there for many years. There are going to be some additional driveways to access these units if approved, but we're not talking about changing the character of this community. We're adding into the community, want to be beneficial participants in this neighborhood. And again, we ask that you look favorably on this request.
Mr. Gohegan, would it be feasible, depending on what this board recommends to the county commissioners and what they decide, as a sign of good faith and good fellowship, that the owner consider adding? It concerns me about streetlights too, being awfully dark. That's a lot of places down there to be pitch black. Would he consider putting streetlights in?
I can speak to him about that, and if that's something that the community would like to see, we can certainly consider it. There's no lights in the adjoining neighborhood, so it would be a well-lit street, you know, otherwise in a sea of unlit of lots. But if that's something that would appease the community, I'll certainly bring it up to my client.
And it concerns me about the community water system. Is it in fact able to handle more units? That's something I think that probably needs to be determined.
Is there a backup generator on that?
I don't know what the power situation for the private water system. It is a private water system. It's been in place for a number of years. I have seen pictures of elements of the unit that look like it's been enhanced relatively recently. That was a prior owner who conducted that work, and I don't represent the owner of the water system. My belief and understanding and representation to you that it's adequate to serve these units, and if there's going to be a market for these units, they're going to need adequate water for sure.
Would the applicant be amenable to us deferring this until the next meeting to maybe answer some of these questions and give us a clearer picture?
We are here at the pleasure of this commission. If you tell me that you're deferring the vote, then we'll come back for the next meeting.
Brad, have you been out into this road, and is it in the condition that everyone says it is?
Yes, these roads are in pretty poor condition. They are included in the current resurfacing project that we have in progress. I think we have about 27 miles that we're resurfacing right now, so they have not gotten to this neighborhood. But I would say within the next 60 to 90 days, all of these streets are going to be resurfaced.
Resurfaced with asphalt or the similar surface they have now?
They'll be getting, well, first off, we're going to do some more patching as some of the residents have brought up, there's several areas that need to be patched. We're going to do that first, and then we've got two layers of asphalt that's going to be going on top of that after we patch it.
Are there any other questions for this commission? If not, lenation, I'm trying to moment, a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to defer to next month's meeting so we can get some answers on some of these questions.
We have a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a second, Mr. Chandler, those in favor? We're going to defer this till the next meeting, and maybe you can come up with some of these answers. Thank you, gentlemen. Can we take a five-minute break, please? I think there's some people who might need to have stretch their legs. Five minutes, yes, sir. Adam was about to bust a cut. Adam was about to bust a cut.
You got recording. It's still going. Um, because.
You got recording. It's still going. Um, because.
You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going. Um, because. You got recording. It's still going.[1057.29]
Those in their report where they recommend approval with conditions. Once again, we indicate that this property would be compatible with residential development in the area, though it's currently in ag use. There is a successful single-family subdivision just to the west and then across Highway 67. You can see it really in the corner of the picture there on your screen. That is another R3 development, zone development across 67 that also fronts on the 67. Both of those subdivisions have been very successful, so we seek to do the same thing here, kind of in between those two parcels. The staff report does adequately address the other factors also governing the grant of a rezon that do support our application. We've got no objections to at least the first five conditions that the staff proposes to any approval. Most importantly, we want to remind the commission that this tract is designated in the future land use plan as a suburban neighborhood character area, again, which calls for and anticipates R3 zones. Since there is the cottage development already just across Highway 67, we're looking to pretty much a similar type development here. Evan Bennett, our engineer, you know, he can specifically address kind of what's proposed there. One thing we can tell you, since we submitted our application and received the staff report, we have deleted the proposed access to Elmer Phillips Road that you see kind of on that end there. So it'll just be just the two accesses on to Carrington South Drive. So with that, I do expect Jason will step up, I mean Evan will step up and tell us a few things in detail about the development, but and we'll save some additional time for rebuttal, but we do ask that you adopt the county staff departmental review, accept that, recommend approval to the board of commissioners. We do ask, and we have no objection to objections one through five, they're all good. We do ask that six through eight be excluded, six because we've deleted the access to Elmer Phillips Road, and therefore I don't think any part of that would need to be paved. We don't own that anyway, but and then as our development will have interior sidewalks, since they've added that, you know, to the ordinance, we'll have a system of interior sidewalks, but we don't, again, expect the sidewalks to be used for pedestrian traffic along Highway 67. It's just a major thoroughfare, so we would ask that the sidewalk requirement along 67 not be required, but we'll remain for any questions or concerns that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Russian. I'll call up Andrew Bunch.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for allowing me to speak. My name is Andy Bunch. I am the president of the Carrington South HOA. I was asked by the community to present points to you today. The homeowners of Carrington South have chosen to live in a rural environment. Carrington South is a peaceful, single-family community atmosphere. We request that you deny the rezoning to a more congested multifamily community. Please consider the following. In the proposed plan submitted, the county asked a question, will this proposed plan adversely affect the adjacent properties? And this was answered, no. As a community, we feel this was answered incorrectly because it will adversely affect our neighborhood by increasing the noise level of our quiet neighborhood, create a less desirable view from our homes, and also place a large influx of traffic and people, and also possibly increase crime and safety. At this time, we have 84 homes in Carrington South, which equals to approximately 168 cars and approximately 252 people. The new development will increase this by approximately 484 cars, 726 people. In the county report, you stated that you expected approximately 7.3 trips per day per household, and that equals 1,766 trips per day for the new development alone. That adds to the approximate 613 trips a day that we are already there by our neighborhood. This will impact our roads. It will increase the difficulty we have in entering Highway 67. This is already a nightmare. Imagine what it will be after an additional 242 more homes are there. I saw where the developers were going to also pave Elmer Phillips Road from Carrington South Drive to Highway 67. This brings up the question, will the county be paving the remainder of Elmer Phillips? If so, think of the increased traffic that Elmer Phillips will bring to this area also with the proposed developments that are on Elmer Phillips that are in the works now. The county in their report stated that there will be a negative impact that this development would create, such as a greater density to this location, much more people, which will have adverse effects on all things, roads, traffic, safety, aesthetics of the area. When you look at the other areas of development in Bullock County, you don't see neighborhoods like Carrington South and then townhomes inserted into those areas. You see comparable housing to the communities that already exist. If this was a property in the city limits, we would expect to see what a developer is trying to propose. We are asking for the same consideration for our area. Carrington South has strived to keep our property values at a stable level, and we feel that this development will be detrimental to our property values, which will also go down. Carrington South has a strongly formed HOA that cares about and enforces our bylaws on how the neighborhood is maintained. Will this new development have a strong HOA that would enforce its rules and regulations in the same manner that ours is? We also see that the county recommends that the city sewer and water be used at this location. Does that mean that Carrington South would also be given the same consideration? Carrington South feels that the rezoning to R3 needs to be changed to R25 to keep the uniformity of our neighborhood, and any neighborhood should be single-family homes with the same layout as ours to maintain the harmonious atmosphere and congruency. We are submitting a petition from the residents of Carrington South with 57 signatures, which is 67% of the neighborhood. Please think carefully before allowing this rezoning to take place and consider how the community sees this as an infringement on a peaceful environment that we have created in Carrington South. We do understand that this county is growing by leaps and bounds, but we don't believe this has been given any forethought about how it will impact our community as a whole. This development is not what we want our community to look like. As you enter the Statesboro area on Highway 67 coming into the city, we would prefer a smooth transition from rural to cityscape living. We feel such a vast difference in structures in one area would be uncomplimentary, and the increase to traffic would be considerably high. We are not against any development, but we ask that you do not grant the rezoning to R3 and give us breathing room by making a new community with R25 with conditions in the same as ours.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Emory Grady Lane.
Can I also ask anybody from Carrington South here that is in disapproval of this, please stand?
And you said you've got a petition. Did we need that?
Yes, I've already presented it to y'all.
Oh, okay, it's down here.
I don't know how to walk this.
Oh, it's in the new one. It's the one they handed out tonight, or they said tonight. All right, Mr. Lane, you have four minutes left.
I'll wait.
All right, Mr. Pope, I think he's got some pictures he wants to project.
My name's Emory Lane, and I also reside in Carrington South, and I think Mr. Bunch did an excellent job presenting points about density and our neighborhood. I wanted to address items six and seven concurrently because they're adjacent to each other and they're adjacent to Carrington South. So what we're looking at is not 190 homes, it's 242 total essentially on our front doorstep. We have concerns about the traffic that's going to be dumped onto Carrington Drive. At peak hours, it's quite a, traffic stacks up at 67 trying to get out, north or south. We, it's less than 700 feet from Elmer Phillips Road to 67. It's not a long distance. My original presentation was going to discuss Elmer Phillips Road, it's paving. I want to tell you about Fair Week. When 67 has traffic, unfair traffic, well, I don't know how that is, we get a lot of traffic in Elm Carrington going down Elmer Phillips, too horrible. The dust is unreal, absolutely unreal. We bear with it for a week, but after that week, we're hosing down everything outside. It's something. If this kind of traffic is going to be allowed, there's no choice but to pave Elmer Phillips Road. Now, I noticed in the commission's evaluation of the application, there was five neutral points, five negative points, and one positive point. The only positive point noted was that this development both would be on Statesboro Water and Sewer, which was extended down to the Optum Clinic on 67 recently. Not addressed in item six is a lift station. The lift station is included in item seven. Don't know where it's going to go, but there's a area allowed for it. Right now, water stands in the ditch at Carrington Drive and 67, and these retention ponds, I assume, are going to dump off 67 and go down 67. I don't know. That's a concern. The traffic right now, using your numbers, is about 600 trips a day in and out of Carrington. We're looking at 2,400 total. That's a 300% increase in traffic on Carrington, especially since the alternate entrance and exit has been done away with. At Carrington, we have a lot of pride in the neighborhood. We have a really quiet neighborhood, Mr. Bunch related, we have a really strong HOA, to the point that our HOA pays for streetlights along Carrington Drive right now. Members of HOA patrol, I get on my golf cart, and picking up trash all up down Carrington and Elmer Phillips, bringing in 242 homes. I don't know if they're going to be rental units. The plan said fee simple, which to me indicates sale. Who's to say, who's going to own them? Who's going to rent them? I don't think the character of this development fits very well with Carrington. Now, I wanted to show you what we have. I was going to go over the density, but we covered, we covered all that. The recommended density in the plan, Bullock County plan, was two to four for a suburban neighborhood, but we have nine. We have seven. It's more than double, almost double for each side. That's a lot of density. What I wanted to point out to you, and I have just a little bit of time, is we have R3 across behind us. I'm not good at this. We have R3 behind us on Horrible Road. We have R3 across from us. We have R3 going in right, right behind us in the branch, right here. I'm backwards. Right here, 88 units. We have, right now, we have 309 R3 units, either existing or under construction, all around Carrington. We have it across the road. I don't think another R3 development, this large, is going to benefit the residents of Carrington Drive. I see noise, and I see problems. Thank you for your time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, Mr. Russian, your time. We'll go switch back to, I think, Mr. Bennett signed up to speak. Or?
Yes. Yeah, just a couple of things, and certainly all due respect to Mr. Bunch and the entire HOA. It is a beautiful subdivision. We're certainly not looking to detract from it, but we are certainly trying to follow the land use plans that county, Bullock County, has presented us. And along this corridor, they have anticipated R3 zones in the future land use plan. That's why the one located already on 67 across the road, I mean, you look at it, it's also a beautiful and then successful, I think that developer was here earlier, I don't know if she's here now, but I mean, they can be a successful attract if well done, and that's what Jason, that's the kind of guy he is. I mean, he lives here, too. He's not from New Hampshire, whatever they mentioned earlier. I mean, he's, he's right here in our, and he's going to produce a beautiful subdivision there and along and follow all of the ordinances that the county put there to protect. And again, we've talked about traffic. We was on the smaller Burke Haltar Road, and I understand issues there. Now, we're dropping out into a major thoroughfare, and I realize there's going to be traffic anywhere. I mean, you could, this comes up every rezon that I bring, no matter where it is. It could be on I-16, we don't get the same thing, but I mean, it is a major road. I mean, I'm not sure where else you could get and not have a traffic issue, but certainly we're going to be there to follow whatever the traffic analysis that the engineers require of us. That's what we're going to do. Right now, I don't think there's any anticipated paving of Elmer Phillips Road. I heard kind of Vera saying, didn't know if they wanted that paved or not, but again, that's, Elmer Phillips is a county dirt road, so that means there's property owned by the property owners on both sides of the road. It's not owned by any, the county or any particular owner. And since we would delete that potential access there, so we're not looking to have to pave any of Elmer Phillips Road. But I think we can address these concerns that this, these homeowners, again, we're not looking to go through their subdivision. Thankfully, we're going directly out to 67, but obviously, they are going to have to share that public road with those residents at that time. But it is a county public road, Carrington Drive. Thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Russian, if you allow me. Since it does border Highway 67, would Mr. Williams be, would can you consider having an increased buffer? Sidewalks are gone internally, and you want to eliminate item number seven, which has a sidewalk there. We consider an increase in that buffer from 25 feet to something larger.
We could certainly do that on, as far as.
Just on 67. Just on 67.
That might be a question for Evan. If we don't do the sidewalk on 67, can that buffer be increased from 25 feet, Evan?
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Russian?
Are these rental or sale units?
These will be fee. Now, they can be sold, but again, you know, people can rent their house.
Sure, yeah, of course.
There won't be a prohibition to it.
Does require a decel lane?
Brad.
That's a Brad.
Where are you talking about exactly?
On 67, would it require a decel?
There's, there's an existing decel lane there.
Okay.
There's streetlights in this development already, or no?
In.
No, I mean, in the, in the new, the new development.
Yes, we'll have, we'll have lights in the, in the new one, yes.
And sidewalks. Any other questions? All right, is there a motion or recommendation?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I know one of their complaints is the cost of who's covering, I guess, the power bill or whatever for these streetlights. Is that something that Mr. Williams would be able to discuss with them?
Are there streetlights on Carrington Drive already?
There are. We have streetlights, and I think we're doing it on all streets.
Right, and there will be in this.
The highway pays for three streetlights on Carrington Drive.
Okay, yes, and answer to that, we would definitely share with that expense.
Okay.
Absolutely.
No more questions?
Share or assume that expense.
All right, will interrogate a motion?
Make a motion to approve it with an increased buffer and to assume an additional condition to assume that streetlight, whatever, whatever bill that entails on Carrington Drive sale.
Yes.
All right, that would be eliminating items six, seven, and eight. Condition, but do we need to put the condition in that the buffer would be increased?
Yeah.
All right, we've got a motion. Is there a second? If no one, if there's not a second, then we'll need to retract that motion.
Can I ask a question again? What's, what is, is there going to be a traffic study to see what, you know, what needs to be done?
If you'll come before again, please, sir.
It's my understanding, reviewing Bullock County's policies, that if a development will increase traffic by 100 cars during peak hours or 500 cars per day, a traffic study is required. I would like to see that study done before approval.
Mr. Couch, is there something we can add from the county?
Well, I think that's an existing requirement before, it's a before sketch, I can't recall, and it's in the subdivision regulate, or it might be in zoning, but, I mean, it would exceed the thresholds, right?
Absolutely it does.
Yeah, so the only thing I don't know without looking it up is when would it be required? And or was it required at the time of pre-con?
Well, I'll, I defer to, to the county engineer on that, when, to satisfy that requirement for the traffic study, and we have conditions in there, in the report, that would require turn lanes on Carrington Drive leading into both subdivision access, access roads.
So the turn lanes would be on Carrington, right?
Correct.
Right, so I think, from what I understand, the developers agreed to install the turn lanes on Carrington South.
Okay.
There's already turn lanes on 67 going into Carrington South, and that was the only thing. The size of this development would not warrant a traffic signal or any improvement like
When, when did the applicant inform you that the road leading out to Elmer Phillips Road was going to be taken out? Or did you just find that out tonight?
Now, that is new to me tonight, but we did, number six, we anticipated that if, if the development came back at sketch plan phase, that if they wanted to use that, that access point as shown tonight, then they would have to pave Elmer Phillips Road, but otherwise, if that was deleted at the sketch plan phase, then, you know, that number six really doesn't, doesn't apply if they don't use it at sketch plan phase, so.
Well, it's a subterfuge to avoid the paving condition.
Just the way we read it, it said if we had that access there at sketch plan, that it would be required to pave, and that's the way I think that's conditioned.
Well, this is my opinion, because I forget the gentleman who was up here, his name in the blazer, who spoke, and he showed the map with the two developments together.
Mr. Lane?
Mr. Lane, yeah. I mean, he makes a very valid point, and you've got to look at this as really one single development, even though there are two separate applications. And if the applicant comes and changes their intent at the night of the meeting, then we've got to think of what to do with Elmer Phillips Road in a different way. So, you know, and if this was all, if this is the way it was presented in the pre-application, forgive me, not pre-con, then, and they, then they come tonight and change it, again, that's a subterfuge, which is a nice way of saying you're getting juke. So I would recommend maybe going back and, or rather deferring this until next month, and let's let Development Review go over it one more time and make sure that we have with the applicant their actual intent on what they're going to do with the infrastructure.
All right.
Because we, you have to have that kind of certainty in making a, in making a recommendation if it's to be positive, and so does the county commission.
We have a motion on the floor to which we don't have a second, so it needs to be retracted. How do?
I guess you just rescind the motion.
Yeah, whoever made the motion can withdraw it.
Okay.
Oh, draw.
All right, the motion has been withdrawn. Is there a new motion or recommendation?
Make a motion to defer until we get the answers.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a second. All those in favor? All right, we'll ask for deferment. Mr. Russian, thank you.
Make a motion for item seven as well, please.
And to defer item?
Item seven is the same development.
So we'll have, but we need to hear it, correct?
Do we need to hear the next?
Well, I'd ask, I would let that applicant speak, but I mean, if, if they're in agreement to defer it, is it the same, in the same general vicinity?
It's across Carrington Drive.
Okay. Then I, yeah, I mean, it would make sense to defer it as well, I guess.
What's going to make the traffic impact?
All right. Okay, we'll read it. Jason Williams has submitted an application to rezon approximately 7.08 acres from R4 to R3 for the purpose of creating a multifamily housing development. Again, the property is located at or near 16287 Highway 67. Of course, Steve Russian will be acting as agent, and Mr. Pope, this is just more or less just across the road, correct?
Sure, so just real briefly, this is, the parcel is outlined in blue, it's just, again, across Carrington Drive, not the smaller portion, which is divided by someone, someone else's property there, but, you know, for all intents purposes, it's same access.
Same, same property subdivision.
You know, similar density as proposed.
All right, to do this correctly, do we need to hear all applicants again?
No.
Mr. Akins, I guess it's the county attorney. We have more or less the same people signed up to speak. Do we need to hear them again for the same thing, or can?
Well, I would just ask if anybody objects to deferring it, because if it's the same, in essence, the same.
Part of the same subdivision.
I mean, if.
Yeah, I would just make this statement. We would be fine deferring. Again, we didn't seek to bring in this two different applications, but it had two different property owners in each side of the road. This was Judge Faye Sanders Martin's property, and we just closed on that last week. Otherwise, it is basically, you know, all right there in the general area. We, when we had the original development, and we showed that kind of the access road to Elmer Phillips Road, it's a dirt road, we didn't expect that we would have to pave it because we don't own it. So when we saw in the, the staff report that if our sketch plan was to keep that road, that there would be a requirement to pave the road that we didn't own, so that's the reason we reported that. We didn't know that was going to be a requirement until we got the staff report, and so we weren't looking to subterfuge this board or anyone, but we certainly agreed to defer, to go over the traffic impact analysis.
Okay, all right, do we need to make a motion? Mr. Butch? Mr. Butch?
Mr. Russian stated previously at his beginning of his speeches that the other locations nearby that have been zoned R3-1 is the Hammocks, which is directly across from our entrance. It is R3, but they are single-story, kinda like duplexes is what they are, which would be congruent with what our atmosphere is. And we would like to see them change their plan to that style of housing, rather than having townhomes and have such a large, high-density of people moving into that area. With the other, I think it would be a lot better and a lot more congruent to the neighborhoods.
Well, perhaps you have some time now to meet with the prospective developer.
We'd love to meet with them and try to work with them and get this straightened out.
All right, then we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Next month.
Make a motion that we defer.
All right, we have a motion, we have a sub-motion, and a second to defer this to the next meeting, to the October meeting. Is there all in favor? All right, that's unanimous, we will defer it to the October meeting. Item number eight. LNS Acquisitions LLC. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could quietly leave, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. To rezone approximately 199.56 acres from Ag 5 to R25 for the purpose of developing a single-family residential neighborhood. The property is located between 7,300 and 7,600 Cleto Road. And Hayden Rollins will be acting as agent, is he here? I hadn't seen him, Mr. Pope, but I hadn't.
I had to come on Hayden's behalf.
Oh, okay, all right, Mr. Pope, and then?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. This rezone request, location, as shown, again, approximately on this map, it is in the rural open space, character area on the future development map, on Cleto Road. Currently, it's used in agricultural use. Primarily, primary access as proposed would be on the Cleto Road. As you can see here on the zoning map, properties zone Ag 5, other properties near, surrounding it are Ag 5, other are 80 zone, small parcel zoning, which is consistent with the character area of, of that area. This is the proposed site plan showing, you know, again, the density that could be developed at max density for this parcel. And this is the property, again, when we placed the sign on the property, so. With that, let me get to my recommendation. Staff recommends a denial of the request. However, if approval is granted, we do recommend a number of conditions for the property, so.
Mr. Bennett?
All right. This is not townhomes. So just a few things I want to point out. There is a image in connection to Cleto Road, there's also a plan connection to Mill Creek Road, that will be a secondary outlet. And if you look at the conceptual layout, you can see some buffer spaces in there. What that is designating is planned phasing of the development. So, all of this would not happen at once. The idea is to, to develop one phase at a time. There are 208 total lots. They would be served by private water system and individual septic tanks. There has been a traffic study completed for Cleto, impacts on Cleto Road and Mill Creek Road. This site is outside of the suburban neighborhood in the future, future land use map, but it is about a mile from the line. And, and as we all know, those lines are somewhat arbitrary, I mean. So we're very close to that designation. And also, let me point out that there's a 400-plus similar development lot, 400-plus lots currently approved within a mile and a half of this, this planned development. So, it's not that much of a stretch. That's all I have, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
There will be some questions, so, we have several people signed up to speak, so we may need you in reserve, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tommy Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board. First off, I'd like to, those that are here to oppose this action, would you please stand? So, it's, it's, it is not a, an incidental activity that is being proposed here. It is outside of the development zone. It is over three-quarters of a mile from Franklin Road, which is the dividing line. So, it is designated rural open space, which by the definition is preserve and sustain rural character, lifestyle, and agricultural economy. The site design is supposed to be a small building footprint in relation to the lot size. So neither of those conditions are here. They are, this is a definite activity of what urban sprawl and spot zoning looks like. This should not be considered. I thank the staff for recommending denial. We are in full agreement with that. This is not in any remotely close area to the Black Creek Character Area or the Interstate 16 node locations. It is on the other end of the county from that. And, you know, one of the comprehensive plan, the update, one of those statements is, the intent is to preserve agricultural land and agriculture as a cornerstone of our community. I live between the two entrances of this thing, on the other side of Cleto Road. My parents have been there since the early 40s, my family. My dad, mom and dad lived there, I live there, my uncle lives there. So we are adamantly opposed to this activity. This land was purchased very recently by these developers. So it is not a location that's been held by a family, and, you know, they need to do something different. This is, this is something that is intentional to violate and set a precedence outside of the development area, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Brenda Robinson?
I thank you, staff, for your hard work on this, and I'm just gonna hit bullet points and not even try to speak eloquently, we're all tired, there's a lot of people behind me. Not gonna go on about the schools, the water, the small dump on Cleto Road, the current zoning, the exceeding our projected population growth, emergency services, and all those things. People behind me can say that, people in front of me have already said those same things. You know, we do have the big neighborhood going in close to 301, we've got the new one across from us on Cleto Road. There's going to be an immense amount of increased traffic, no one can deny that. We are even possibly gonna have teenage drivers on top of our adult drivers. And going to the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, under Chapter 4C, the nine standards that are used for traffic control signal need studies, which the updated traffic control study has not been done yet, according to the latest information I could find. Anyway, so we're gonna look at 1,955 trips per day on our increased traffic. Section 4C 08, warrant seven, standard B says five or more reported crashes within a 12-month period involving personal injury or property damage will get us a traffic light. And I have a feeling that could possibly happen before the traffic study is completed and the traffic light is installed. Are these homes gonna be owner-occupied, or because of our proximity, we're not that close to the college, but you still have the possibility of rentals and VRBOs, and these people are not gonna have a vested interest in our community. The ecosystem with the big subdivision down the road, I've already seen an increased number of deer, coyote, and snakes on my property. So when you tear down the property across the street, that's messing up that much more of the ecosystem. So not only are you messing up that, my property, the field beside us, where the deer are three to 12 a night, are going to mess up our property as well. And the standards that is on the application, balance between the hardship on the property owner and benefit to the public, there is no benefit to Cleto community with this development. The only hardship on the potential owner is that they were gonna buy land that's zoned for farming when they want to do residential. And number eight, substantial reasons why the property cannot be used in accordance with existing zoning, because the new owner doesn't wanna farm it, is not a very good reason. And I have a question for you. If this property line was just made in 2023 and it's arbitrary, why do it? Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bowie, Ben Bowie?
I defer.
All right.
You handled it too well.
John Smith?
Thank you for your time. My name is John Smith. I live in the Cleto community. Been there 36 years, raised my family there. My, two of my kids live in that community also. I'm not gonna beat all these things again, 'cause y'all have heard them. I live on Franklin Road and Mill Creek Road together, cannot handle this kind of traffic, they're not that good a roads. I have a business that's really in borderline that area too, on Mill Creek Road, so I've traveled this every day, multiple times a day, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna hold up. I have, I've purchased, I have a small farm out there, I purchased what's left of the Franklin Farm, which Franklin Road is named after, and we have spent thousands of dollars upgrading this, upgrading this home, and it's, it is our home, it's where we wanna raise our kids and our grandkids. So, we're asking that y'all will deny this and keep this agriculture. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Duran Deal?
Madam Chair and Board members, thank you for your labors, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I own the farm to the west of this parcel that's under discussion. My grandparents purchased that in the 30s, or maybe even before that, it was a working row crop livestock farm that they raised the family on. And I'm fortunate enough to be able to inherit part of it and then buy some other parts of it that my aunts and whatnot wanted to sell. That particular part of land right there, which joins what we call the Kelly Farm, that is some of the best tiff soil in the state of Georgia, it's classified that way. It's, God designed that piece of dirt to grow crops. In my 52 years, I've never seen that piece of land go idle. It's produced onions, cotton, peanuts, and no telling what else. I always envied that 200 acres over there, in fact, when I was a child, I kinda told people that was mine. It was ours. It wasn't, it had a pivot on it. But God created that land to grow crops, not homes. And like I said, the farmland there that I own is still row crop and livestock, I've carried that on. And if you do research, you will find that a subdivision and livestock do not go together. Because I can only say, I've got some horses over there that I raise, that's what I do, they're worth more than some of y'all's cars. And I'll guarantee you, some little city kid's gonna come over there and feed them over the fence, one of those horses is gonna die, and we're gonna have a new problem. They're gonna open a gate, they're gonna climb over the fence, they're gonna taunt it, they're gonna go get the mushrooms out of the feces, and they're gonna smoke them and get high. All that happens when town goes to country. We like it there. I could've sold that piece of property instead of inheriting it, but no, I was blessed to get it, and I'm gonna keep it. And it, the traffic is gonna be a major thing. There's more tractors, combines, and sprayers go up and down Cleto Road than cars at this point. And everybody behind me knows how to respect that, because that's what they know. These new folks coming into the subdivision, there's gonna be some sort of fatality crash, something else, because of a tractor. Well, that farmer also that's farming that land, that's his livelihood. He's gonna have to give that up. Everybody in here's got some clothes on that are made of cotton, you probably like onions. We can't let town come to the country and take all that away. Those are wetlands over there that are, will be disturbed. There's no doubt, you put roads, roofs, and whatnot with the drainage and whatnot, the wetlands will be disturbed. I would just hope y'all could deny what's at hand. That being said, please consider each one's thoughts tonight, and take care of the farmer and the country folks that wanna live that way. Thank you.
Is Pam Davis still here?
I am, but they've said it all.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. All right, we'll go back to Mr. Bennett. Are there any questions? I'm gonna go back to the agent. Are there any questions from this board? If there are no questions, okay, is this the one that you signed up for, and your name again?
Nikki McCrary.
He signed up incorrectly for a wrong agenda item. There were like eight seconds left, if you.
Drainage, drainage?
We've had a big rain.
Say your name again.
Nikki McCrary, 36, 47, Mill Creek Road, have a beautiful log cabin that sits right on the pond, right on the water. Three or four inches of rain, I have to pull the plug two or three days ahead of time. It's a great drainage system, okay? I don't know if you cover up 200 acres of wonderful soil here in Georgia, I don't know where that water's gonna go. It's impervious material, like they said earlier, it's gotta go somewhere. I'm afraid it's gonna go in my house. And so, I've got neighbors who also live there on the pond, so we are very concerned from an engineering standpoint, not to mention all the many other things that have been said about the, the water and the drainage and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you, Mr. McCrary. All right, Mr. Bennett, any rebuttal you'd like to add?
Just a couple of points. Number one, the traffic study that we submitted is, was completed in accordance with accepted engineering standards, that's pretty typical for a traffic study. And the developer would install the required turn lanes on Cleto Road if those are warranted. And there's, even with this number of lots, there's, there's just no way that a, a traffic signal would ever be warranted for, for something like this. And then, finally, on the stormwater front, we always prepare a fully engineered stormwater study to make sure we're managing post-development stormwater appropriately without impacting others, so, that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennett. Are there any questions? Are there any questions from this board? All right, the public portion's closed now, and it's time for discussion from this board, and if not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny, is there a second? Second, all those in favor of denial? All right, denial will be recommended to the county commissioners, October 1st, 5:30 in this room for a final decision. Thank you.
Madam Chair, is there anyone that can guide us and kind of eloquently, eloquently speak to the board, to the board commissioner?
If you'd like to choose one of, you know, one of your neighborhood people? I mean, just have, just have one talk, and, and he can talk about 10 minutes, because they'll, they'll hold steady to 10 minutes, they're really strict about it. Good luck. Ladies and gentlemen, we're still in an active meeting, so if I can have your attention, please? If y'all will take it outside, we still have not adjourned, thank you. All right, if there is nothing else that we need to consider tonight for business, for a motion of adjournment, Ms. Reiner, a second for Mr. Chandler, all in favor, this meeting is now adjourned. Or at least some ice cream.